Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the April 11th, 2018 meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been an executive session discussing litigation and negotiations. And may I have a motion to reconvene the public meeting?
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Jeffrey Mester.
My pledge of allegiance is to the God who makes us, and to the Father for which He sakes, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to start off this board meeting in a really, in a really great way. One of, one of the nice things about being a board member is to celebrate the accomplishments of our students. And today, we will be celebrating one of our students who has attended the Putnam-Westchester BOSI's program. And this is Ryler Boyle, who'll be receiving an award as a student of distinction. And I just want to recognize a few people in the audience. We have James McCarthy, Assistant Superintendent of Putnam-Northern Westchester BOSI's. We have Lynn Allen also, Assistant Superintendent of BOSI's. We have Frank Schnacker, who's on the board of BOSI's and who is liaison to Chappaqua. Thank you Frank. And, and of course, we have Ryler and his parents. And we have the principal of the Pinesbridge School, Chilla Martin, who I'd like to welcome up to the microphone and present, present the award to Ryler.
Thank you so much. And I, sorry, I'd like to thank the board and the superintendent for taking this opportunity and honoring him. We've been so fortunate to have Ryler and we just want to thank you for sharing him with us. And I wanted to just call his teacher up here as she has a few words to say about him. So Karen Martin?
I tend to talk too much, so I heard step down say kind of pulled me in. I've had the pleasure of knowing Ryler and his family for a little bit, almost two years, I'd say. And it's really been such an honor for me. He started with us, this adorable little peanut, shy, very timid with his Superman backpack and his cape, and so excited to be in school, but very, very timid. And he has since then become more open to new, to exploring new experiences. He's become a more independent walker. He's been showing more interest in his peers. And we've actually had to put bells on the door because he's so, his independence has grown so much that now he's trying to leave the classroom to independently explore the school, which as a teacher is terrifying, but also his PT is here as well. It's amazing to see how much he's grown. And I feel so honored to have been part of his journey and I can't wait to see what his future holds. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of the school district, Ryler, as your superintendent, I get to put the award on you for all your good work. And just take a photo? Maybe we can get a photo of all of our BOSI's guests who are here? Is that Vicky?
Thank you. This was great. Thank you for coming, everyone. We really appreciate it. Thank you. And now I'd like to move on to a CSF grant presentation, which we have early on in this meeting because, really because of the significance of, of this particular grant. This is for our one-to-one digital learning initiative. And this is a grant that would provide access to personal devices to each and every student. The, the school district itself is implementing this program for the fifth through the sixth grade next year. And the CSF grant is partnering, is a, as a result of partnership with the district to provide this one-to-one initiative for the third and fourth grades next year. This would enhance our curriculum and add efficiency and learning across all of the disciplines. And it's in keeping with the Chappaqua School District mission of developing each student's full potential. I want to thank CSF once again for partnering with the district in a, in a very significant way. It's significant not only regarding the impact on the curriculum, but also the amount of the grant, which is, I think, the highest amount we've received so far from CSF. It's about $317,000. And the only higher grant than that was, was that of the iLab. So, I want to thank CSF not only, of course, for the amount of the grant, but for working with the district for such a long time. This is a result of a multi-year study. And it's, it's been a partnership between CSF, the K-12 Technology Committee, and the Technology Department. So, without further ado, I would like to introduce, I think it will be Nona Ullman, who will speak on behalf of CSF. Nona is the Vice President of Innovation and she's been working on, on this project and on this idea for many years. So I want to recognize you, Nona, for a lot of your efforts on this. And, uh, welcome.
Thank you. I hope you're Gillian Polley and Marjorie Trub, who's our current president and our next president of CSF. Is Joshua Tassis not here tonight? Black?
No.
Okay. Cause he has been, and Christine and Mary have been wonderful, been working together very collaboratively on this grant. We have a joint innovation committee with the Chappaqua School Foundation, as well as the, many of the leaders of our, of the district. John has been to a meeting and Jamie, I think I saw over here, has been to our meeting. Am I missing anyone else, Christine? That's, um, it's really been wonderful. We've been meeting since October. We came to Christine in October and we said, "We want to make another big target investment like the iLab. What ideas do you have?" And Christine said to us, "I want to, I think one-to-one would be a great area to explore. Let's go forth and, and do this." And she really was just very supportive and encouraging. And we had Josh and we've been working together since then for months jointly developing goals. And it's been a community effort of the district. We've had three students on the panel, parents and the school district, and it's been incredible. So thank you for the opportunity. Just if folks aren't aware, the, the goals are really to support the board strategic question, to support critical thinking. And then there are three additional goals that support the other board goals of basically active student learning, strong student collaboration, and then using a digital environment to increase the value of instructional efficiency, because a lot of ways that technology can help learning happen faster. So those are the goals that really was led by your goals and we really tried to align with that. It's going to be phased in, as you mentioned, over five years, and our role is the third and fourth grade iPads. There, there was a lot of technology innovation that's already happening in the district. So our initiative was really to help expand and standardize that innovation across all the schools, so every student has access to the same innovation that you've already started to develop here. And then did you want us to talk about the Grafflin grant as well? Was that part of tonight?
Um, yes, yes. Might as well.
Okay. So, um, so the, the grant that you mentioned was for basically providing an iPad for every student in grades three and four, and included some software, some carts and some, the cases and keyboards for those iPads. The Grafflin grant, we're very close with Jamie and her team, and that's also been a wonderful collaboration. Grafflin is an $18,500 grant, $500 grant to provide 25 iPads to a second grade class. It's ending at Salmore. Salmore. Basically, it's going to provide case and keyboards, and that's going to be kind of a little bit of a pilot effort, because they are going to then provide kind of a lighthouse for the other second grades as that rolls out next year. That includes basically as well, three swivel cameras. The teachers there have been very excited about this. You see both the top-down effort from the district meeting the bottom-up organic effort of the teachers in the middle. So this, these are teachers that are wanting to do this. And basically, the goals here are to increase student motivation engagement with the technology and personalize learning, so that whether your child is above level, at grade level or below grade level, they will then have the support they need and really have instruction personalized to where they are. And the technology helps you do this. Right now, the, the tools they're asking for, one is ST Math, and research has shown that that is a tool that can help meet students where they are and progress faster than grade level. And then Lightsale, which is an e-literacy platform that supports students' independent reading, so that they can, the teacher can get real-time feedback on students' comprehension level as they're reading. So the grant includes that. And then the use of swivel cameras, so that the teachers can kind of flip their classroom. And basically, for students that are ahead of the class, they could tape a lesson ahead of time where they go to the next lesson, or if someone wants extra instruction, they can record themselves, and then the student can listen to that at the beginning. So, all of this, the teachers have taken a lot of extra time and initiative to try and really make education better in our district. And we're just thrilled that there's so much innovation happening here, and that it's both the teachers and the district together. So, thank you very much for lending us the collaborative partner.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nona. We could not have done this without your expertise in, in the field of education. So, it's, it's been a wonderful partnership. I just want to add that in total, with our traditional grants and this targeted grants, we're at over $520,000 this year. And also, that doesn't include the $35,000 in Insta-grants that we have approved to date, and two more arrived today. So we're, we're so lucky that our teachers are energized and they're coming to us and thinking of things. And I also just want to thank the community. Without the community and our supporters, we couldn't do this. So, we have our work cut out for us. We've got to raise more money, but that's all good. That's the fun part. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah. So, I just would like to say, because unlike many of the other grants, I've been involved with this since the beginning. And I am so excited that we're able to work with the foundation to enhance our program in a way that will impact all of our students in grades three and four, as well as allow us to explore next year how we could expand our efforts to K through two. So we're thinking about that as well. I want to thank Josh specifically, because he has worked so hard with the foundation to, to help this process. And his, his, his guidance, his experience as a programmer and as a teacher, and now as an administrator, I really think helped us move this forward in, in a, in a meaningful way that has been really well thought out. And the, the amount of support we received from the parents and from the community members on the foundation to, to make this a reality was absolutely tremendous. So I do want to thank the foundation, myself, as well as Josh, for all of his efforts to make this a reality tonight. And then I also want to acknowledge that Adam, our new Assistant Superintendent, is here, and his level of expertise in technology will, and, and he has just recently implemented a one-to-one environment in his current school district. And I have been from a one-to-one environment, so I think we really have the right people around the table to make this happen in a meaningful way for our kids. So it's, it's incredibly exciting and I'm so happy that we're able to have this opportunity next year for our students.
Yeah. And I, I'd like to add that the grant includes more than just the devices. It also includes a lot of professional development as well. So it's really part of the curriculum. And so that's a very important piece of it. So, again, I want to thank you, Nona, and also thank you, Marjorie Trub as president and Gillian Polley as Vice President, Executive Vice President, for your leadership. This year, you've done a tremendous job, along with the entire CSF board. And as you, as you so aptly put it, a great thank you to the community, because they're the ones who donated and allowed our school district to, to provide such an enriching environment and opportunities for our students. So, with that said, I will, yeah.
So, Marjorie, could you come up and explain to us what's happening in a couple weeks?
Oh. I was waiting for the plug for the evening.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Forgot the plug.
That's great. Right. Yeah, we have our spring benefit, our annual spring benefit, our biggest fundraiser of the year, which is in two weeks from Friday at Sleepy Hollow Country Club. We still have tickets available if you want to go through our website, but we're, we are close to selling out. So we're, we really have the great support of the community, but I hope everyone can enjoy it and come join us, because it's a really fun night. And it really is a, you know, a great community event. We have a grant showcase where we have about eight to 10 grant exhibits, where the teachers and students come to show their grants. We've got the Aquafellos coming to perform, and we've got the Greeley Sting Band performances, and we have a great silent auction. So it's a really, it's a really fun night. So I hope to see everybody there.
Okay. Yes, thank you. So I, I'd like to move up the grant items up in the agenda for approval right now.
I move up to 5.8, 5.9.
Okay.
I second.
And any further questions or discussion?
Just thanks.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, the superintendent's report.
So before, we have our academic update this evening from Mr. Rhodes and the Greeley Faculty Staff Students at Administration. I'd like to begin the superintendent's report tonight by acknowledging the recommendation on the agenda to appoint Jamie Edelman to be our new Director of Literacy, starting July 1st. So, as you may know, Mary Ford has served in that role for Chappaqua for the past three years. And this year, she had the task of balancing both the directorship, along with our interim Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. And she recently accepted the Assistant Superintendentship in Katona. And we are certainly going to miss her and we wish her well. And we plan to honor her work later this year in June during our tenure ceremony. And in June, we'll also spend time honoring Dr. Singhhai, because she also will be recommended for tenure in June. And you also may note on the agenda this evening that Kasum is leaving Chappaqua, because she has accepted the superintendency in Garden City, so, in Long Island. So, we look for, we'll miss them both terribly, and we look forward to recognizing the good work both of them have done for the children in our district, particularly with our faculty since, since they've been here. So I just want to take a moment to thank them both, and then let the board and the community know we'll have an extensive process where we honor all of our tenure candidates, and then we'll recognize a lot of what they've done here in the district for our, since they, their arrival at a later time. So, I did want to take a moment to say thank you to both of you. So tonight, I think it's important for the district during our time of transition that we have a level of consistency in the central office as we look to expand and enhance our programs, K through 12. And in my short time here, I have found Jamie to be a leader amongst her colleagues, particularly in the area of literacy. She has a deep understanding of our reading and writing program, and will be instrumental in working with our K-12 faculty as we look to improve our vertical and horizontal alignment of our reading and writing programs across this district. One of our more seasoned administrators, she will serve as a mentor to our new elementary principals, as well as a key advisor to our secondary principals, as a leader who can pull, pull from her building-level experiences to help shape instruction. Her professional development philosophy is one that models best practices alongside of her faculty. She is quick to empower the professionals around her to share strengths and collectively tackle areas in need of improvement through collaboration. In terms of her previous experience, she's been a principal here for five years before coming to Team Grafflin. She spent 13 years as a principal in Putnam Valley in an elementary school. She was an assistant principal in Croton. She spent nine years in New York City as an elementary school teacher, literacy staff developer, and an assistant principal. And a majority of that time was in District Two, where the, where Mrs. Edelman was able to experience professional development in one of the most rigorous and progressive and influential educational form initiatives in New York City and, with Teachers College. So, tonight, I am pleased to recommend Jamie for this appointment to the Board of Education. And both Adam and I are thrilled to leverage Jamie's leadership in such an important way for the children in Chappaqua. So, I'd like you to consider the resolution to appoint her in, at the, in the agenda at this time. If that's, if that's acceptable.
Okay, yes, absolutely. Yeah. I, I would just like to add that there are many changes going on in the district. I mean, that is pretty obvious for the community to see. But I have every confidence that the talent that we have here is as excellent as ever, and we are in truly, truly excellent hands. We're very sad to see our really talented administrators have worked so, so well and so hard for us. And, you know, we, we will leave our goodbyes and acknowledgements to a later meeting. I just want to say a few words there. But I, I just want to let the community know that I have no doubt that this district will continue on in providing the best education possible to your children. We are in excellent hands with truly, truly talented administrators and staff here. So, on that note, will, would we be approving item 4.1? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
I'm recommending we approve item 4.1, Appointment Probationary Recommendation, as written in the agenda.
I so move. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Jamie. Really excited to have you in this role. So, so then the question becomes, well, what about Grafflin? So I'd like Kasum to update the community on Grafflin and Roaring Brook, and then where we are with Kasum's position as well.
Sure. We're actually actively seeking to fill both positions, Roaring Brook Principalship and at Grafflin. And we're currently interviewing Roaring Brook. We had opened the search, and we have actually reopened it to find the right candidates. The screening interviews for the Principalship will end next week, but we'll bring, again, we're going to, what we'll be doing for both buildings is combining the search process, so we're not doing two separate searches. And that will, and next week, the screening, and then we'll go to a committee interview. For the Assistant Superintendent for HR and Leadership Development, that has also been posted. We're doing the screening interviews, and we'll bring a few candidates back to meet with the central office team before they go to a larger committee. So we're, I, I don't think there's a day where we're not interviewing and looking at candidates.
Hey, if you, if we combine the searches, how do we know which person goes to which school? Meaning, I mean, are there different things you're looking for in a Principal Grafflin or is Roaring Brook?
There are. There are certain, certain key components. And what we'll do is combine both the buildings when we do the search, and we know which candidates we're going to be bringing to the committee, and which we believe from the district office and will be more suitable for which building.
I think we faced that before with Eric Byrne and Jim Skug. You know, one went to Roaring Brook, one went to West Orchard. And I don't know how that was determined, but I, I think it was the same dynamic.
That was so long ago, even I wasn't.
So, are you, were you?
It was not. It was a year before I got it.
So, we're hoping to have, if not at our second meeting in May, our first meeting in June, appointments ready for your consideration. But again, we won't settle, so if we don't have the right people, then we'll, we'll continue with the process, and we'll have an interim in place for the start of the school year, because it's really important we have the right people in our administrative position, well, in all our positions here, particularly these, these positions are critical to the functioning of the district. So, thank you, Kasum, for that update. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Robert Rhodes and the Greeley Quadray to present on innovation at the high school. So.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you. We're very happy to be here this evening. I want to set the stage, and then we've got some different groups to speak with you much more directly about the work going on at Greeley. And we're very excited about the work. It's work that's been ongoing over the past several years. We're really anticipating moving into the new spaces as they come online over the next couple of years. And we want to share with you how we are preparing to take advantage of the new spaces, and even how we're rethinking the use of existing spaces. The goal in all of these is to engage students in active learning. If you go into typical Greeley classes now, you'll see students paying, alert, paying attention. When we talk about active engagement, we're talking about really increasing the cognitive load and the kinds of tasks and thinking we want students to do. That sort of falls into that general realm of 21st century skills you hear about so much. We're going to hear from teachers and students about some of that work, see examples of it, and hopefully that'll make it really concrete. So, I'll be back at the end, but let me get this started with World Language. World Language Department is a relatively large department of around 14 teachers. You know, we offer Spanish, French, Mandarin, and Latin, which is almost like four mini departments within the departments. And it's interesting, half of the department, or a little more than half, is going into the L Building. And so they've been working together, thinking about what kind of immersive environment they want to create there across the languages. One of the interesting outcomes is the largest cluster of the department called...
Sorry, we have a microphone. Okay, keep going.
Keep going. Okay. Is centered in D Wing, and they've started to work together over the last couple of years on their own group, thinking about how they can use space and what kind of activities they want students to engage in. And they've thought of things that I can never could have imagined, and they keep growing it over time. So here to speak with you about that. So both groups are thinking about instruction, both the group going into the new space and the group thinking about the existing space. Here's just a quick slide, familiar teaching and learning vision and goals around active student learning. Just highlighted a couple of the things you'll hear tonight, not just from World Language, you'll also hear it from social studies. And then Student Government's going to talk a little bit about their work as a proxy for the clubs and activities, and the learning that goes out, outside of the content areas in the school. So there's, you'll hear about the use of time, configuration, space and technology, opportunities for student collaboration, creativity and innovation, how teachers and students give and receive feedback, ongoing assessment and revision, and of course, creativity. So with that, each of the assistant principals also is in tonight, and they'll introduce each one of the departments. So I'll turn it over to Lynn, who'll then introduce our first two speakers.
Good evening. So I'm here, I have the privilege of introducing one of the departments that I oversee, which is World Language. And it's really exciting times in the whole school, but particularly, I feel that in World Language, we have a lot of really, really great things happening because of the instructors, the teachers we have. So one of the things I want to talk about is just setting the framework for what you're going to be hearing from, Senor Warren is here, thankfully, and Landon Highbloom, one of our students. And you're going to hear a detailed encounter of something that was experienced this year, and it was built upon, actually, last year. So the, the ideas are creative and they're growing, and they're tying right into all of the work we're doing with our new spaces. And they're reimagining, as Robert said, our existing spaces. So active learning is crucial, and it's more than just walking past, as Robert said, a classroom and seeing people paying attention. Really to get a more rigorous learning environment in which we can practice the skills like collaboration and problem-solving and creativity, you have to provide opportunities for students to get up and move and interact. And in World Language, it's an amazing opportunity, because what we want to focus on with skills are things like speaking and listening and being able to have a dialogue in an authentic way. So you're going to see an experience that was created in which, in which that was happening. Another really important goal that we're, we're looking at is the idea of really having instructors that are fluent, and, and no pun intended, in World Language being fluent, but I mean fluent in the sense of being able to cross into different classrooms. So we have a lot of examples of two different levels or two different courses being offered at the same time, and they're having shared instructional swapping of students in order to get different experiences during a traditional course timeframe. So it's allowing students to get contact with different teachers and to experience different ways of accessing instruction through the facilitation of a teacher. There's common goals, so we're starting to see, regardless of the isolated mini departments in our World Language departments through the languages, we're seeing that there's going to be common goals across, no matter if you're, for instance, a French one student or a Spanish one student, or if you're in your first year of Mandarin, that you're experiencing similar skills, work, and similar experiences. So we're trying to create those common goals, common proficiency standards. There's also common goals surrounded around, not only the content, but around the culture. What are ways that we can combine cultural experiences in each of these language? Because we really, one of our goals is, how can we create, really, in the 21st century, more global learners and, and people who are going to really have a better understanding of different cultures. So it's not only based on content, but we're also talking about general skills. We have, you've, we've been doing a lot of work at the high school around Ruler, which is social-emotional learning, which I'm sure you've heard bits and pieces of. And in some of our classes in World Language, we're actually even working on skills with our mood meters and really getting students to work on vocabulary while getting a sense of expressing their emotions, being able to regulate those emotions, all within a language environment. our mood meters and really getting students to work on vocabulary while getting a sense of expressing their emotions, being able to regulate those emotions, all within a language environment, which is really a great opportunity. And the biggest thing with both the World Language team that's going to be pushing into the L Lab, as well as those who are going to be staying outside, is that we really are creating an experience that they're going to have no matter where they end up. And what that is going to do is allow all of our students who take a language to access these experiences and to really get a better sense of the importance of language and culture. So with that, we're going to give you a specific example of where a lot of these things have been targeted. So I'm going to turn it over to Senor Warren and Landon Hybloom.
Thank you. Okay. So, hi, I'm Senor Warren. So I won't repeat what's already been said, but I will say that last year, we were thinking about the L Building experience and how students and teachers would be having experience that was geographic in that area of the school. And for those teachers who weren't in there, who would be in D Building, what would that experience look like? So, D Building last year started Celebracion, and the D Building teachers put together a day where every teacher and student in D Building participated, put something together, that shared culture, music, food. It was organized by the teachers in D Building. We wanted to demonstrate that we could build a sense of community. And from a teacher's perspective, I think it was a success. Landon was my student last year.
I can vouch and definitely say it was a success.
Thank you.
I took two. I was in the high school for a different meeting. I just happened to walk by, and it was a great success.
Well, I appreciate that.
Only now can we believe you.
It's official. And it was a great opportunity for my colleagues and I to spend some time planning and executing something. This year, many of my students were asking about it again. And so my colleagues and I thought, well, how can we take what we thought was a success last year and see if we can build on it this year? Last year, if you were in D Building, you participated. So it was geographic in that sense. We wanted to see if we could build a geographic sense of community. This year, we thought differently about it. We thought, what if we combined languages? So last year, in D Building, we had four Spanish teachers. This year, we wanted to see if we could go across the language levels, Spanish, French, Mandarin, and Latin. But every student in the school participating at the same time might be a bit of a challenge. So we split it up. We made one with fours and fives that we had as our winter celebration, and the plan now is in May, where the weather's nice and we can sort of expand outdoors, to have a one, two, and three, again, of Latin, French, Chinese, and Spanish, so that it's not geographic, it's not because you're in D Building, it's because you study a language and will have the opportunity to interact with other languages as well as students within your own language group.
So, my name's Landon Hybloom, and I'd just like to start by saying it's a complete honor to be here, surrounded by some fantastic staff and faculty here at Greeley. And I'd sort of like to speak about sort of my experience with this because I was fortunate enough to do it last year and this year. So, one thing I was telling Senor about is, from a young age growing up, my parents sort of encouraged that I travel. And travel has always been a big part of my life. I've been fortunate enough to go to places like Peru, see Machu Picchu. I've stayed with the family for two weeks there. The year before, sophomore year, sorry, that was last year, the year before sophomore year, so freshman year, I was able to go to Ecuador, also stay with the family, and also see Costa Rica. And I've been in so many other places, really able to immerse myself into culture and practice my Spanish. And I've taken away so much of this, and it's honestly been such a huge privilege, being able to travel. And I can say that one of the reasons why this was so successful, I personally believe, is the cultural experience that we had at the celebration that we had here at Greeley was really able to integrate not just Spanish, but Latin students, French students, and Chinese students. So those people that aren't as fortunate enough as me to go travel were able to immerse themselves in all of these cultures and see so many different sides of the world all in one. And it was so beautiful. And get all these little flavors of different cultures and not just the dumplings that were there, other flavors. But it was honestly just such an incredible experience, and I think we do have pictures later in this slide that I'll be speaking to a little bit and just sharing my experience later on.
Thanks, Landon. And in fact, pictures, the one good thing we can say about the snow days this year, and yes, there's one good thing we can say.
Thank you for that.
Is that on one of those wonderful mornings where we were woken up by the message that we could go back to bed, we also unfortunately had to postpone our celebration. But the good news from that is that I kept postponed to the following week, which coincided with what the Chinese teachers had already planned for their Lunar New Year celebration. So while they were originally going to be part of what we did, we ended up moving and sharing their celebration. So I actually, of course, was horrified by having to move it initially, but then when the Chinese teachers were so accommodating, they set up shop here in the academic commons and with the help of some incredibly enthusiastic parents who supported, both parents of the students as well as DTA, parents in the community. You can see a slide there where they had some fantastic food, they had calligraphy, they had all these different kinds of activities happening at the same time as the rest of the languages. So they actually had a much stronger presence because it coincided with the Lunar New Year. So that was a big plus, so thank you for that. And so I mentioned that last year, so a few colleagues and I got together and decided to plan this, and it was very, I would describe it as very teacher-centered. I taught merengue dancing and there was some karaoke, spari- spariokas we called it, Spanish karaoke, and some games, but it was very teacher-centered. We are the ones who decided what the activities would be. Students got passports, and they moved from place to place and got stamps on their passports each time they participated. But we wanted to do things a little differently this year, so in addition to incorporating the, all the languages, we decided to turn it over to our experts in training the students. And a picture here shows one of the rooms that we had, the game room, was Latin, Chinese, French, and Spanish students put together games that were culturally relevant, and they're the ones who led the activities. And in fact, if you forward, we, last year, we saw ourselves as the experts. This year, we turned to the students and asked them to be the experts. And Lynn can speak to that.
So one of the things that I did for my presentation, like I mentioned earlier, was I went to Peru. So while living in Peru for those two weeks with a really endearing family, I learned this dance called the marinera. So I had a little accent on that. And it's really just a down-to-earth dance that everyone knows, if you're in Peru, you know the dance. Like, it's throughout the culture of Peru. And interestingly enough, not that many people know it back here in the U.S. But there, it's very popular. So one thing that I did is, when I went to Peru, right off the plane, right with my family, they already started teaching me this dance, like I was their little kid. And it really involves just twirling your wrist and all that, and a lot of hips, which I, you would, I'd be horrified if I presented in front of you.
That's not true, because, I'm sorry to cut him off, but he presented to the students as what he was getting to, and he was unbelievable. He had the whole room, people coming and spilling in from the halls to do it with him. So don't sell yourself short there.
Thank you. So yeah, so I presented, I made a presentation out of it. And it was so funny, because one thing that I could say, there's so much magic in this experience, and what we learned from the year prior. So besides integrating all of these other languages, the other thing, Senor could definitely vouch for this as well, is that we had a lot of food, tremendous amounts of food, and not as much posters and presentations that we did this year. And we learned so much from last year that we made this year just so much better. So being a senior next year, I just can't wait to see the next one going forward. But there's so much food the first time, and you didn't really get that, those games that we had this year, and you didn't really dabble into all of those other smaller, more important things about a culture, just the food, which was fantastic. I left there incredibly full. But this year, I really wanted to do some food, and because it was very easy, and Senor was like, no, like, do something different. I think you're going to have so much fun. And I really did. Like Ms. Stewart said, people poured into my room, even though I was super embarrassed to be in front of this whole crowd, trying to wiggle my hips and such. And it was a lot of fun, and I taught them a lot about what I learned, my experience, which was so nice. And although I'm not Peruvian, I really did feel like a true native to Peru while being up there. And I think, I would say, I definitely made my family proud back there, and I told them afterwards, and they're like, oh. In Spanish, we say, estoy muy orgulloso, which is, I'm very proud. And that's what they said to me. So it was just, it was so much fun, and this was just a little, a small touch. The presentation was just a small little part of this cultural celebration, like Senor mentioned. We had food, we had all of these other things, and spariokas was definitely a hit. It was so much fun, so yeah, that's my show.
Thank you, and it was awesome. Some students, in fact, if you want to advance one more, there we go. So yeah, so what we did was, we asked all our students, the teachers asked our students to work in group brainstorm a list of ideas about any possible things that anybody could do, and then think of a way to present those. So some of the activities were posters and presentations, more traditional, and others were more actively engaging. In addition to Landon's dance, we also had two guys who taught an overflow crowd to tango. We had passports again this year. Oh, this is a great slide. This is the tango. You can see Grant and Josh right up center there. They're actually leading the presentation. They did a fantastic job. Isabel Irazari is one of our teachers here at Greeley, and her mom is Colombian, her dad is Puerto Rican, and they came that day. And Isabel's mom is dancing just under the Spanish flag there in my classroom, and she's dancing with a senior, Brendan Meyer, who's having a great time. And so having her parents here was awesome, and having the students lead the students was an incredibly satisfying experience as a teacher. To step back and let my students be the experts was a very satisfying experience. And I appreciate that Mr. Messner mentioned the food last year. We had lots of food again this year. But I also wanted to mention how much we appreciate the support of the all levels of the administration. We have always felt very supported in every way, and this certainly was no exception. I like to think that you came for the students and the culture, but I know the food was awesome as well. So thanks for that. Louise Brady, by the way, took the photos, I wanted to mention that.
Definitely. And in addition also, I couldn't, I'd like to also thank the community as well, because some of these parents here that are with us today can really make some killer food. I have a friend of mine who lives right next door, his name's Alan Gu, and he, his mother was actually, I went to his house just a couple of days ago, and I felt sort of that same vibe that I did during our cultural celebration, a little more hands-on. I learned how to make dumplings. And one thing that I can say, in eating dumplings here at the cultural celebration, if any of you have ever been to Spoon, some parents here can definitely make dumplings better than Spoon. And Spoon's really good. So that's also one other plus of the cultural celebration, that you're really getting more of this authentic food than if you went out into Chapua.
Well, thank you.
And I guess last I just want to make sure I didn't mention my colleagues. Isabel Irazari, Anidik Dugar, Nicole Demente, Carly Lee, were tremendous to work with as an example of Sarita, Sarah Harris's passport, where they shared their reflections, their expectations, their experiences from the day. And I have to say, I'm already looking forward to the celebration for the freshmen and sophomores, the ones, twos, and threes, which we'll be putting together for May.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Hojer, Ms. Jacobs, Ms. McKee, and Posse.
I hope I'm not the only one ready for a second dinner after doing my whole afternoon. Makes me hungry. So my name is Tyler Hojer, I'm one of the Assistant Principals here, and I have the pleasure of working with the Social Studies Department. And before you hear directly from our students and two of our Social Studies teachers about the work that they've been engaged in this year, I'd like to talk briefly about the behind-the-scenes work that they're involved in to support student learning. If you take a moment to look at our board's vision and goals, you know that student collaboration is very important in this district. We believe students learn best when they learn with each other, and we have the same vision for our teachers, knowing that if they have an opportunity to work together, they're going to be more effective in the classroom. And our Social Studies Department has embodied that over the last several years. Last year, our ninth-grade Social Studies teachers planned new units of study around problem-based learning for all of their students. They met regularly to share learning practices and new resources, and they developed a very engaging curriculum for our students. This year, they continue to meet during Course Three to revise and make appropriate changes based on feedback from students for the current ninth-grade students that we have. Our 10th-grade teachers are also involved in curriculum development. They meet every Course Seven, and they're developing likewise curriculum based on problem-based learning. And much of that has been influenced either through iFolos or from STAT developers that our teachers have worked with throughout the years. And that, the 10th-grade team is being led by Mary Devane and Regina McKee, and that's been happening since September. If you think about your history experience, when you were in high school, you might remember a heavy focus on content and trying to remember names and dates. Our ninth and 10th-grade teams are taking a completely different focus, and they know that a better approach is to do the first thing about skills, and then think about how content can reinforce those skills and help students grow academically, but with the heavy focus on skill development ninth through, all the way through until they graduate. And because our students, regardless of the teachers they have, our students have similar learning opportunities because our teachers plan together, we know that we can build from ninth all the way through 12th grade on these skills. This June, our students will take for the first time a new global regions, and that region's focus is on content from 10th grade. And unlike rote memorization, students are going to have an opportunity to analyze and evaluate documents and use those documents to develop their answers on those tests. At this time, I'd like to introduce our teachers and students. Stacy Jacobs, Regina McKee, Lulu Zeichenberg, Evan Basil, Kate Coffino, Carly Lugic, and Lizzie Knox.
All right. So just to introduce it, I'm going to say how excited we are to present some of the work that we've been working on for really more than two years, because we started planning and thinking about to keep in line with new state standards, with the new regions coming quite several years ago, I think, but it got implemented for the first time last year. So we're very excited to share some of the work that the students have put together for you to hear from the students themselves, what the experience has been like in the classroom. For those of you who had students prior to the last two years, I think you'll hear quite some differences, or maybe you've had students who are older and now also going through it to see, hopefully you've seen some of the changes on your end as well. So we're first going to show you the what. We're going to show you what the students have produced in a couple of selected units from nine and 10. Then we'll work backwards and talk about how we design and put these units together and projects, and then, of course, the why we're doing it. We'll start with ninth grade. So one of our units in ninth grade was empires. And so in thinking about how to make this more engaging for students, we decided to use a case study model and really dive deep into select empires and have students evaluate empires against characteristics, what allows empires to be successful or to fall. And they spent the whole unit evaluating evidence and thinking deeply about every single empire. And for their culminating assessment, their project, they had to...
And for their culminating assessment, their project, they had to select an empire and apply to the Empire Hall of Fame. And so, that involves a lot of planning together, brainstorming, writing a script, shooting a video, reshooting a video, thinking about props, thinking about the creative lens they wanna look through. And so, what I have for you for student work are two application videos for you. So, they are in character and applying to the Empire Hall of Fame. So, I'll show about a minute of each.
I'm Alexander the Great, and welcome to my empire. First up on the right over here, we got my economy.
Okay. This is where the goods were. We have gold and lumber, slaves, oil, and horses, and of course, wheat. Since the people traded these and made them available to be sold, the whole entire economy of the empire profited because everyone had enough money. There was a written language, spoken language, called coin, which made it easier for everyone in the empire to communicate with each other. There was also a common currency, which made it much easier for the economy to stay stable.
Right ahead, right here, is my prized possession, my military.
Alexander has led a very strong army that has conquered Greece, much of the Asia Minor, part of Egypt, and Persia. Due to the amazing tactics, we have been able to conquer the Persian Empire despite being outnumbered. Alexander has created many tactics for the military that has benefited us greatly and has shared every hardship and a spot with us.
As we go up the stairs here, right on the left is my prized possession, well, one of them for sure, my advances in technology.
Our empire has made great advances in math, science, and technology, such as pi, the Pythagorean theorem, and Euclid's geometric proofs. Also, another scientist named Archimedes used geometry and physics to design the compound pulley and his screw, which helped pull up water.
That's your boy, Alexander the Great's empire, y'all. Great, wasn't it?
Our empire conquered many lands back in its prime. It was supposedly an invincible empire, displaying its strength through both military and governmental control. The military and the government helped the Persian Empire take over many lands in their time. The Persian Empire was vast and structurally sound.
The Persian Empire had an economy that dwarfed all previous ones. The surplus of land led to agricultural capabilities rivaling that of Rome thousands of years later. That combined with their road system, a common currency, and lack of government interference led to trade unlike anything the world had ever seen before.
The Persian Empire conquered many lands. They were most definitely the biggest empire that the world had ever seen at the time. The military made this all possible. It consisted of thousands of archers, cavalry, and foot soldiers. But the most essential part of the military were the 10,000 immortals.
Okay. So, I'll stop there. As you can see, like, two different perspectives. So, we have very creative, we have documentary-based, but both are incredibly accurate and show a very high level of thinking in terms of which characteristics they decided to showcase for their application. So, they couldn't talk about everything, so there was a degree of analysis. But in ninth grade, we really wanna focus on the skills that they need. So, when we think about student work and projects in ninth grade, it's about how do we work together? What does collaboration look like? What happens if I don't agree with the person that I'm working with? How do I express myself? How do I back up my opinions? And just understanding that everyone brings something different to the table. So, in ninth grade, we focus on our habits of learning to develop the skills that they'll need for their 10th-grade work.
And the unit we're gonna showcase for 10th grade is their unit on the Industrial Revolution, which we all probably remember studying at some point or multiple times in our history books. And so, we all, for each, in a PBL-driven unit, you have a driving question for the unit, which was, how did the Industrial Revolution impact thinking about rights, about human rights? And I should preface that with saying, the 10th-grade curriculum, we decided to have a driving question for the entire year, and you'll hear a little bit about that from Lulu. But our driving question for the year is, how has the struggle for human rights shaped the modern world? Because we start with the Enlightenment going through the modern day. So, that seems to be a question that kind of captured every unit is dealing with rights in some way, whether it's war, the genocides, or the Industrial Revolution and workers' rights. So, to start the unit, they have to learn some basic content knowledge, obviously, in order to be able to do something with that knowledge. So, the first part of the project was a role-play simulation, where it was a British parliamentary hearing on the actual British Industrial Revolution from the 19th century. And students took on different roles, so their perspective, the factory owners, factory workers, historical figures in history. We had people representing Adam Smith, what would he say, Karl Marx, Maltese Ricardo, and miscellaneous reformers. And the kids really love the active role. They're thinking much more deeply about it because they're trying to convince, you know, Parliament of how, you know, what they should do, should they embrace these changes, should there be reforms? And so, really applying the content to make these arguments. Fast forward, with PBLs, the end goal is to have it really connect to modern day and make it connect to be engaging to students, which is what we're trying to do more in units, and it's easier sophomore year because the second half of history is a little bit easier to make a modern connection. But our connection is to modern day, and the idea that, you know, workers' rights are still really important and are still not met around the world in many cases. So, what we did for the modern-day update, students were allowed to choose a company of their choice. So, some picked Adidas, others picked H&amp;M, Gap, some picked food companies, about how they grow their food. And here's where we start, we knew we wanted to do research skills, so we are combining this, hopefully this engaging topic of bringing it up to modern day, that this Industrial Revolution is still happening in places in the world and infecting large portions, you know, large populations, including our own. So, they have to choose which company they were interested in. We taught them, we were in the iLab, so we would really utilize that space. There are spaces in the iLab, if you haven't been there, classroom space, you know, with a smartboard where I, as the classroom instructor, could teach them about, you know, proper citations, how to cite, when to cite. But then the students could break off into various rooms. Those who are researching, you know, a certain type of company or a specific company could work together to find quality articles, to peer edit them, to talk with each other, is this a good article for us? Is this relevant? And they wrote papers. They always received feedback. One big thing we're working on, we've really tried over the last couple of years, is to always have a constant feedback loop, where the students, you know, peer feedback, feedback from the teacher, because we should never assess a scale unless they've gotten feedback in multiple ways. So, we've really tried to be very cognizant about, when we teach a skill, to provide multiple pathways for them to relook at their work before they're ever assessed on that skill. And then the really exciting part for us, we had this upstander activity, because the last part of a PBL is bringing it, having a public activist role or making your public voice heard. So, in this one, we had an upstander activity, and students had a choice, which is also, we hope, crucial in increasing student engagement. They could write a letter, or they could do a poster, a pamphlet, a petition, a social media campaign. A lot of them created Facebook pages, Instagram accounts, things like this, or newspaper articles to the school newspaper, et cetera, where they would try to bring awareness to the issue. In the cafeteria for three days, all the students in 10th grade brought their, whether it was a letter, a poster, and we could see a couple of pictures of it to show the student work. Here's a bunch of their letters. We had these posted around the cafeteria, so that all of ninth, 11th, and 12th grade, you know, all day long for three days, all 10th-grade students, you know, signed up to man the table and man the cafeteria for various time periods. Here's other, here's a poster on Nestle, here's one on Adidas. And this group, I don't know if you remember, I remember this one in college, you, these would be on the table, and you could pull off a slip on the bottom with the phone number or whatnot. And so, they had these around, that students could take it, and it was a link, you know, on their smartphones, they could go on and sign a petition. In some cases, they created the petition themselves, in other cases, they were linking up with national petitions that were already going on. So, students, the ninth, getting the ninth, 11th, and 12th grade to make it like an authentic upstander activity. And here's just another poster. All right. So, how we're doing it, as we said before, it's problem-based learning or project-based learning, and you can see all the different components. I kind of walked you through the Industrial Revolution one, where there was the driving question, what do they need to know about the UDHR, about human rights? The inquiry question, to what extent is my company upholding it? And in some cases, they found that companies are really doing a better job, like, they've been brought to trial, or they've been accused of violations, and they, and they found happily that in some cases, there are things that companies can do, and that, you know, activism, people who have stood up before have been able to make a powerful change. And I think that was really powerful for them to see, the fact that people could, like them, can actually make a change. And I know we're running, we are so excited about what we've come up with, we want to be concise, though. But our current PBL, we just started now, our driving question is, are we entering a new Cold War? You know, with all, everything that's happening in Russia and Putin, also with North Korea. And so, we have some things they need to know about what was the Cold War in order to evaluate, are we entering a new one, or are we entering something similar, but it's not quite for various reasons? So, that's the inquiry. And our project for the unit will be doing a simulation on the six-party talks and groups, getting collaboration, working on that, building on that collaboration from ninth grade. They're so used to working in groups, it's just kind of automatic from ninth grade, which has been so, I did the ninth grade last year, and I'm doing nine-ten this year, and it's really great. You know, freshman year, you're setting the stage, what does collaboration look like? And my sophomores are so amazing. It's like, they just get right into it, and they know how to work in a group. So, it's, it just makes it move so smoothly. So, there'll be Japan, there'll be China, and we'll try to tackle the six-party talks of the nuclear standoff on the Korean Peninsula.
Good luck. So, the why. So, our district has done a lot of thinking and a lot of work around, what kind of skills do we want to really graduate to leave Greeley with? And so, the social studies department has also been thinking about those kinds of skills. And what we thought would be critical is to develop a cohesive skill rubric and skill spiral from ninth grade to 12th grade. And so, in this way, what we've done is decided which skills ninth graders should be able to develop, both developmentally within the content by the end of ninth grade, so that when they go into 10th grade, across the board, every 10th-grade teacher knows where they can pick up and building upon those skills. And it spirals all the way up through 12th. So, like we said earlier, in ninth grade, we focus a lot more on the habits of learning skills, staying focused, being attentive, staying organized, advocating, working with groups. In 10th grade, they're able to, because ninth graders come in with that skill set, build upon that and go into the historical thinking skills. How do I think like a historian? How can I get to that more critical level where I realize something that maybe wasn't so surface, so surface-available to me? And so, when assessing habits of learning, I mean, it's important for the teacher to be able to say, okay, who can focus, who's listening, who's paying attention, who works well with others? But to have students take a moment to reflect on their own ability to work well, to share leadership, to collaborate. And as you can see, like, they're pretty honest, not ever since, like, strength, strength, strength. So, I think the digital survey, the technology allows students to be honest in a way that is more meaningful to them and kind of draws their attention to areas that they can improve on, areas for growth.
Impact on Teaching. So, Chris, Impact on Teaching, we're so appreciative. The administration here has been so generous, and I know it's a huge feat in the schedule to bill time for us to work collaboratively. I'm looking at Laura, building her schedule. How tough that is, I know. But it's amazing to have a set period dedicated to work together, and you can see us working in the iLab together on products, because we can, as we all know, just brainstorming, you come up with such better ideas. We constantly give each other feedback. Impact on Teaching, also, the great things that iFellows does, many of us are in iFellows, and so, not only within our nine-ten team, but across disciplines, listening to English teachers, listening to world language teachers, getting into their classrooms, seeing what they're doing with their students, getting new ideas, seeing how they assess and get feedback, has been such a wonderful experience the last couple of years to see. We're fortunate, we have built in time, we've done a lot of summer work, where we're, not with all the pressures of students running in and, you know, and all the phone calls and everything else that goes with it, but just to really immerse ourselves in what we want them to know and what's the best way to roll that out to students. And of course, the digital collaboration has been, has facilitated all of that.
So, we obviously think that PBL is really great for students, but we're gonna turn it over to some of our students just to talk a little bit about their experience with PBL. So, without further ado.
Hi, I'm Evan, and I just want to say, I think this PBL was really great, and I think it's kind of moving to a new era of learning, but taking in this information, and instead of just using it to fill out bubbles on a sheet, using it to apply it in real-world applications, I think it's a very, 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 very good thing. And I just, I think the reason why students as well, teachers, like this project-based learning thing, is because it allows us to bring out creativity that we know every child has, and I just think that allowing children and teens and students to express themselves through educational ways is revolutionary and something we haven't seen, you know, seen made prominent in schools ever, I guess.
Hi, I'm Kate. I am a freshman in Ms. Jacobs' ninth grade, not, Global Nine class. And when we were in middle school, it was a big change going into high school, because we went, like, the majority of our learning was digital now in high school. Even though this was a big change, it was definitely a very positive change, because in the 21st century, basically, we, all of our lives are digital, and it does help with collaboration when we're working on projects and in class, because with Google Docs and Google Drive, we can share our work, and we can work online at home. And like, being able to easily access computers, even when some people don't have computers in class, is a great thing.
Hi, I'm Lizzie. I think that working in groups, it's been really beneficial to our learning. So, in our class, we sit in groups of three or four, and in these groups, we're always encouraged to, you know, like, ask what, like, what each other thinks. And I don't know, I just think this is really, sorry, this is really great, because we're not confined to our idea, we're opening up our minds to what our peers think, and we're not, it's not the same kind of pressure that you get in the classroom, where when you're expected to do everything independently, where we're interdependent, we're not, we don't depend on each other, we don't depend on ourselves, we really just all work together to make the class, this work, yeah.
Hi, I'm Carly, and I just want to say that I really think that the workspace that we have, the iLab, really helps us with our projects. We can be in a space where we're slightly more relaxed, as classrooms can sometimes seem a little bit hostile, as there's so many people around us, and we're almost nervous to share our ideas. And in smaller groups, farther away from our peers, because in the iLab, we get to spread out, it's just easier to talk about our ideas and really think about what we're doing and enjoy what we're doing, because it's such a cool space.
Hi, my name's Lulu. I'm a 10th-grade student here at Greeley. And there are many things that I love about the curriculum of the Global Ten course this year, but the main aspect that makes the class even more enjoyable is how we relate everything back to one central idea, human rights, like Ms. McKee was saying. And this makes students, including myself, want to become better upstanders, especially in the world that we're living in, and really make a change. So, one of the projects that we completed this year was either writing a letter to a major company that was denying their workers of some basic human rights, like Ms. McKee said, or we could submit an essay to the Kemper Foundation's Human Rights Essay Contest. So, I chose to do the essay. And for the essay, we had to think about whether or not the current US polities are prioritizing some rights over others. So, with the driving question and the knowledge that we had learned about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in mind, we as students were able to get feedback from our teachers, have access to the library database to do our research, and we were able to learn about current events while relating everything back to this idea of human rights violations. With this, I personally felt more involved in the world that I am currently living in. Another aspect of the Global Ten curriculum that I really enjoy is how much collaboration we do as a class. Instead of sitting down and listening to lectures all day, we often get split up into groups and learn about specific topics, and then come back together and teach our peers about what we learned. An example of this was our last project about genocides. Each group was assigned a case study for a genocide, and then we mastered that genocide. We learned everything about it, we learned what classified it as a genocide, we learned the topic, and we learned what happened during the genocide. So, after collaborating with all of our group members, we came back and we gave the presentations to the rest of the class. I think that with this project, not only are we better able to understand the topic, but we make it so that other students can understand it. So, we're not just all learning the same thing, we're all learning bits and pieces, and then we're coming together and teaching other students, because I feel that if you can teach something to somebody else, you know it better for yourself. So, with all of this, the Global Ten curriculum is not only exciting to learn, but with the new aspect of project-based learning, it's even more enjoyable for students. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for your time tonight.
I'd like to invite Ms. Stu Backup and Mr. Whitmer and Ms. Goldstein. They're going to speak a little bit about student government, which is a proxy for the clubs and activities. When we think about space and student learning, we just don't think about the content areas and the classrooms, we're also thinking about all the different ways students can learn at the school.
I just wanted to pause for a second, I didn't realize the kids were going to leave and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize their commentary. I mean, a lot of what they shared up here, particularly what Lulu shared at the end about human rights, was absolutely inspiring. That's what we aspire our students to be doing in our classes. So, I just, I need to pause and thank our first two platoons for the work that they've done.
Wait, 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 I also regret that you left, not that I understand, I'm sure you have a lot of homework, but I was also waiting to thank you so much and to your, to your peers for all the work you're doing and for coming here to present it to us. It really means a lot to the board and to the administrators to hear from students, I just want you to know that. And, so, thank you for your very passionate presentation and very genuine ideas about how, how these active learning spaces are working. It's really important for us and for the community to know because we've all invested in this, to better your education and to make learning a lot more engaging and relevant to the world you're going to enter in after you leave this community. So, once again, I want to thank you for taking the time to come here tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. And I see Landon is still in the audience, so before you leave, I also want to tell you that, you know, your presentation was so infectious. I was hungry, I wanted to dance, I wanted to, I wanted to travel, I just, so it was really awesome.
I'll dance my way out.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to that, we know you have school tomorrow, so.
Thank you, I have a lot of homework, so.
Yes, we understand that.
And Bruce, so this is, this is the dance, are you, is it figured?
Oh, thank you.
Semi farewell.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Senator.
Do you want to come up and be the superintendent because I think you need to run the district?
I want to thank Senator.
Thank you so much. I think your check will be in the mail tomorrow. Just kidding. Here we go again, sorry, Robert.
I was already worried about following him, but no.
If you guys just dance, we'll be okay.
We lost our student already because he had too much homework, so we have to deal with that.
So, our next part of our presentation is about student government, clubs and activities. So as you have heard tonight and as you know already, we have so much to offer academically in all of our classes, but we also know that so much learning happens outside of the classroom. So we wanted to share a little bit about some of the exciting work that has been going on around those areas. So, clubs and activities and student government have a lot to do with time, which we know is so closely related to space. So we have all these new exciting spaces that are going to be coming to us soon, but now we're thinking very hard about how to utilize time effectively to match up with those spaces. We also know that having time for clubs and activities in and out of the school day is essential to our students' growth, their connection to our school and the community, and their social, emotional learning and health. So, a perfect example that our faculty advisors are going to speak more about soon is the most recent March 14th student walkout that was planned and facilitated by our students with the support of administration, faculty, and other students outside of the student government. So you'll hear more about that soon as an example of some of the work that we're doing around time, space, facilitation, leadership skills, et cetera. Our coordinator of student life has also been working very hard on grouping clubs and looking at successful models of clubs in our school and seeing what are the aspects of those successful models and how can we apply it across the board. She's been working hard on building leadership skills for our students, creating leadership transition plans so that as our club leaders graduate, those clubs don't graduate with them and they can really continue to help our students grow and contribute to our school. And she's also working on providing training for club leaders, knowing that it's one thing to start a club and to be really passionate about something and another skill set to be able to facilitate your peers. So, we're also looking toward building policy and one of the things that we do is really think hard about scheduling and how we can build time in so that kids have a lot of opportunities to participate and we can allow kids to commit to multiple clubs and activities, but also be very mindful of making sure that they don't overextend themselves and making sure that we provide opportunities to all of our students and not just a few that do a lot of different things. So, with all of that in mind, I want to introduce Mr. Whitmer and Ms. Goldstein, our two faculty advisors for the student government, who are going to share the work that they have been doing with their students to really think about how they might want to revise and remodel what student government looks like at Greeley.
So, we're going to begin with the description of the walkout and the planning that led to that event because it came at a very opportune time, in December, not long after the homecoming dance was finished, we began a process of reflection. Sherry and I were both new to this role this year and with Linda Ryan coming on and also being new in her role, it was just a really good time to kind of reexamine what is the purpose of this organization. And, so, we had gone through our own, within the student government, we'd worked with Jeff Marquette and done some sort of a protocol around looking at the future of student government. And then we had set up some focus groups with club leaders, with members of the faculty, with leaders of the peer leadership program. And as we sat down with each of those groups, we were asking them, you know, how could student government facilitate the work that you do? How can we be a resource to you? And, so, when it came time to plan this event and the outreach happened from the administration to student government, we were able to immediately call together a group that included the peer group leaders, that included grade-level leaders, that included, you know, the regular student government members. And I think we were able to plan as meaningful event as we did because we had, to coin Hamilton, right? We had everybody who needed to be in the room where it was going to happen was there. And I think it really paid off in, you know, highly organized and very well-supported event. So, now we'll sort of take you back a little bit, or through the proposal that has emerged from that reflective process. I have to say, it strikes me tonight, listening to the other presentations, right, that there's so much happening in the school that, around innovation and collaboration and so on, that it really does seem like an appropriate time to be looking at our student governments and be thinking about how, you know, how it needs to grow as the school grows in all these other important ways. And so, from our reflection and those focus groups, we've come up with a proposal to, you know, replace student government with a council that would include faculty and administration and students sitting down together on a regular basis. And knowing that a schedule change was in the offing, we have thought about a way to try to give us a year to pilot it and experiment with it, which would be to take our activity rotation, which is currently a two-part rotation, so students can participate in two clubs. And to have a third wave of that, that would be a government, designated government time. So that students, right now, who participate in grade-level leadership or in student government often have to choose between club participation and this. So, it will have the advantage of freeing them up, freeing up the adults who also often wear more than one hat. And then the other thing we really want to work hard to do is have much more back-and-forth communication among all the organizations, and there are so many across the school that plan events and, you know, and/or look for opportunities to share what they're learning with the wire. And there's a, you know, I think students here have many, many, many opportunities to provide input into the life of the school, whether it's sitting on CFF, CSU grant committees or the principal's advisory committee, or, you know, when the architects came into MEL building. And so, what we're interested in doing is centralizing a little bit more and routineizing that communication from the student body out to the community and also within and across the school as well. So, as I sort of alluded to, we have some events that are fantastically attended and we have other events where we're really competing with one another to draw students in. So, we're really hoping, again, working with Linda Ryan, to develop a more robust common calendar across the high school and to maybe get groups sitting down together and agreeing that, you know, we can only support so many events a month and look for ways to combine, you know, to improve attendance and give people a chance to get the reward for the work that they're putting in. There are issues in school life, like the cleanliness of the cafeteria, where it would be nice to have a little bit more sense of whose job is that, right? Is that a student job, is that a teacher? And so this could be a forum where we could have a group of people taking more ownership of steering aspects of community life like that. And as was mentioned, we really want to encourage students to make commitments not to try to lead everything, but to try to lead one thing well and to be able to demonstrate at the end of that, you know, how they've grown through that leadership.
All right, so, yes, thank you. So, some of the potential challenges that we faced, we presented this proposal that we discussed with the student government. I was going to say, didn't hear me, there we go. We first presented this at our last meeting, just actually last week, even though this was a collaboration of work that has been done with discussions between faculty and students about how we're going to reorganize this. And the initial reaction to the students was, you know, a little bit of a pushback because it's change. And I think that some of the students saw what appeared to be fewer opportunities, which is really not true, but as Tom was just alluding to, the opportunities that we would present and that would be available would be more meaningful and they'd be able to, you know, actually achieve something in these roles instead of just simply saying, you know, that they're the treasurer, they're the vice president, they're on the student government. Because right now, we don't really know what that really means, other than, you know, we throw the homecoming dance and the pep rallies and Spirit Week and stuff. So, you'll see, there'll be a chart after this with some of the opportunities. And then, one of the other things, the challenges, is obviously, all the different administrators and faculty in the building, and all the different hats they wear and all the different commitments they have, want to make sure that we have time for all this and everyone can be available at these meetings. So, this is something, this chart was a collaboration of the students and Tom and myself and even some other administrators. So our regular members would be the six at the top there, but the executive committee would be meeting on a non, we said a non-government day?
Right.
Sort of as an agenda, agenda committee, coming up with, you know, gathering information, like, the perfect example was the walkout, so that would have been, and how we did organize that meeting was we had the students in the center and on the outside, we had, you know, any participating faculty and administrators and, you know, and it was just so well-led and we hope to see this sort of thing continue. And we have also auxiliary members that, you know, we basically, essentially including the whole school, which is what we feel should be. Right now, there's, if you look at like a Venn diagram, there's so many overlapping parts, but no real one umbrella sort of overseeing all this. So, this is one of the things we'd like to change. And I think the last one, and then implementing this, is our timeline and obviously, we're already looking at mid-April right now, so if we could even at least roll out just a little bit of this by the end of the year, so in order, so even for late May, when we start planning our timeline for next year, our calendar, that we can hit the ground running come September. Because as Tom was saying, that this was our first time, we took this on last year and we really, a little bit deer in the headlights, even though we know we've been at the school, but, you know, there was sort of learning as we went, but I think we'll have a better sense of organization if we can roll it out this way. And, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, so even if we can have a little bit of this in place, that would be a start. So, that's what we hope for. And that's basically it, I think, right? Did I cover? Yeah? So, that is our student government, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So, I had also, I, we had been, one of the things that we had talked, been talking about since the start of the year was looking at enrollment in our AP classes. And while it became clear in January that we'd need another year to really figure out collectively with our department chairs, how we're going to approach opening up access to our kids to the AP classes that currently have a closed process, I asked Robert to update the board very briefly on what those conversations have looked like to date, knowing that they're still very fluid, so.
Right. So on the slide, I called it epilogue, prologue. The epilogue being the end of this, but prologue, I'll be back next year and we'll be talking more in depth. So, just as a quick refresher, there is open enrollment right now in AP US History as well as Senior EHAP, European History, and AP English. And so we're looking at what this would look like across all classes. And there's several goals we have, the largest of which is to allow greater student choice, access and entry points, but also to value the role of teacher recommendations and feedback. We want students to challenge themselves without overextending themselves and also build in safety nets for when that does happen, and that's okay. We just don't want it to happen a lot. And we know that, we're doing this for several reasons. One, because we know that students rise to these challenges and are looking for this. And I'll show you some quick data that bears that out in one way. Students are asking for more opportunities to do this and they're doing that, one, because they're students here, they really want to challenge themselves, they're very motivated, very bright, they come to us either with literal world experiences like Landon or virtual experiences of things they're doing and they're looking for something else to challenge and stimulate them. As the world information travels more freely and becomes more fluent, we also know that high school is not the only access point for content anymore, unlike when we went to high school. If you wanted to learn chemistry, the place, unless your parents knew a chemist, the place you had to go was high school to meet that expert, that's not true anymore. You can go online, you can see world-famous chemistry lectures, you can see animated videos, you can study them at any time and any order and any sequence. That doesn't equal learning, but the access is there in ways that it never has been before. And we have motivated students who again and again have found ways to figure out that they want to study this and want to do it in different ways. High school, I still think, is essential because it offers the most opportunities for comprehensive and systematic study, it offers opportunities for feedback, socialization, excuse me, and support. So I think high school still has a big role in this. But we also know students are going to move around a lot more and it needs to be more fluid to meet that need. I spoke about registration, we have every year, we move from one or two now to a couple dozen a year, students asking to go into different classes that might be a little out of sequence or out of level because of their experiences. So that's one way to look at it, so we can track it that way. The other way to look at it is just looking around AP exams over the last couple of years as we've opened up enrollment in history and English. So, quick numbers, over the last five years, the number of exams taken by students here, up around 18 percent. Students scoring a three or better, which is what colleges will give for credit if they're offering that, is held consistently at 82 percent, even though we have 18 percent more exams taken. And the number of students taking an exam has also increased 13 percent. So, we know, the numbers are breaking out, what I know is that students will rise to the challenge presented to them. And so we're really offering opportunities for them to choose those challenges themselves. So, we've made some changes for this coming year already that students are seeing in the registration process. We've created an informed passive consent where teachers will make recommendations to students, but rather than the final decision staying with teachers, now it can be made by the student. So students may opt into things that teachers may not recommend and that's fine. We get a report out to families, so families can see that too. We know some students confer a lot with their families about opportunities and other students make the decisions and, you know, they tell us about it as parents later. Students generally follow the course sequences, but they can move more fluidly toward levels. The tilt is now towards a student decision rather than a school side, the student makes a final determination. And we've set up common add-and-drop dates across departments. Before, there was a hodgepodge of sort of different dates with different departments. So we're trying to create one process so we can give that information to students. One, it makes it clear to students, this is what you have to do as a school, you don't have to navigate and find a different nugget from each department. It also allows us to alert students to decision points, like at this point, if you want to drop a class or add a class, you should do it by this point and really make a decision, not like, I'll give it two more weeks, or I'll try three more weeks. It allows counselors to schedule check-ins with students or It allows counselors to schedule check-ins with students or ask teachers, like, "Is there anybody you're worried about that might be excelling so much that you might want them to switch?" Because now would be a good time. And it also aggregates and maximizes potential challenges. As we know with the budget, we don't have a huge margin in our classes, like our classes end up around 23, 24, not 20. So by setting those dates, if five students change, it opens up spaces for them to move as opposed to, "I come in one week, Ms. Dubeck comes in a week later, and then the seat that we might have been able to swap is not there." You can see them all at once. All right, that's the quick summary of that. But I wanted to bring you up to date, we're continuing to...
So I just want to stop, so I want to stop Robert Reddiger. So I just want to acknowledge, these conversations are tough, right? Because they, everyone around the table wants to make the best decisions for all of our kids. So this process has been one that Robert has led and he's done a great job. So I want to recognize Robert for his efforts, because that will continue into next year. But I think we've made some great gains for our kids for next year already. And you also know that we've opened up our enrollment in eighth grade in math. So this is the direction, I think, that is positive for our students. And I think it's perfectly okay to take more time to make sure we do this the right way at the high school. So I just wanted to stop and acknowledge Robert and the department chairs and all of their work with the faculty and Greeley to make sure that we do this in the best possible way for our kids. And I appreciate the board for giving us the time that we need to make sure that this is done correctly, so.
And I also want to thank you and say that this is going in a direction that's consistent with our mission. And we had been concerned in previous years that the process was not. And so I know that it's been difficult and I do want to acknowledge that, too. Thank you.
All right, so Robert, I know you want to wrap it up, so go ahead with your conclusion.
So my big conclusion, so we started off, I wanted to talk to you about how we're preparing for the new spaces as they come online and also rethinking our existing spaces. The thread that holds them together is the active student learning, where we want students engaged even more deeply with the content and with each other, giving them a higher cognitive load, having to take the information and apply it in different contexts. And that's what teachers and students wanted to share with you tonight, what that's starting to look like. And it continues to evolve. It's a slow process, it's been building over several years. It's both accelerating in the speed and the number of faculty members involved. It's something we look for when we're doing our new hires and we're looking for people to be involved in that kind of work. And they are, and it's happening. We also wanted to bring you a mix tonight of staff who are involved in that, newer teachers as well as senior teachers, as well as mid-career teachers, because they're all thinking about this and enjoying it, and it's bringing students, I think, and teachers closely together. I think our role here is we try to think really hard about having students think really hard, and I hope that that's what you take away from it, just a couple bullet points at the end, but I'll end at that note.
So questions for Robert?
Just one thing, and I probably Mary and John will remember, we were at a meeting years ago talking about that learning pyramid. And the pinnacle of that learning pyramid, and it was basically outside, was being able to teach the material.
Exactly.
And so I think what's so amazing is to see how that very narrow scope that was focused on science is being applied through project-based learning across all subject areas, where these students are able to not just wait for information to come at them, but to be the providers of information to their peers. And I think that's real mastery and I think it's a much deeper learning, and I think it's fabulous.
No, I particularly am really thrilled to see the change in the global nine, 10 curriculums. For any of us that have older children who are way up, this is a big improvement, I think, in terms of student engagement. And all of us, we want them to learn the content, we want them to learn the material, but in a way that allows them to relate it to modern-day life, to see how we got here from there and why we need to learn that. And I think this brings it all together for them in a much more cohesive way, so I'm really thrilled with the curricular changes in this area.
Okay. I always enjoy hearing from the faculty, from the administrators, but I really enjoy hearing from the students when they come. They bring a different perspective, it's there. They're the people who are learning, they're the people who are involved. I mean, we're actively teaching or you're actively teaching them. But it's great to hear them and their experience and how they're getting it. Like Langdon was dancing his way out of, and the last scout, who wrote that letter. I think this is where we need our students to plug for the next step. So thank you for inviting them and always to our meetings and having them engage with us also.
Thank you. I'll just add, this will be, you'll see it later, I need to get the refresher for the name, but the essay contest that Lulu spoke about, our student who is, let me see if I have it right here, I may have missed it, actually won the national contest for that essay award. I remember when they came, the representative came with the check and the award and everything and talked to the student, so won out of, I guess, hundreds or thousands of submissions across the country. When I entered, it was great, I think they published the essay someplace.
Yeah, it's on the website. So I guess I would say, I want to thank Robert and our high school colleagues and our students tonight for sharing the innovative work that's happening in Greeley across all our subject areas. The thinking around active learning will only be enhanced as our new spaces come online because they lend themselves to cross-curricular collaboration and state-of-the-art facilities. So this was our last academic update from our school. So I think it's really insightful for us to be able to see project-based learning in kindergarten all the way up through Greeley. It's incredible how progressive the thinking is in this district around learning, and I think we need to take a moment, we have to thank the board and the community for allowing and supporting us and encouraging us to work in this way with our kids. Our students, I believe, and my own kids, are really fortunate to have the experiences they are in our classrooms, because they're very different than what we had growing up. And I think it's only going to continue to grow and be enhanced in the future as we leverage our resources from the foundation and from our bond and from our district in ways that really make learning exciting for our kids. So thank you. And again, we are very, very fortunate to be in Chappaqua. Thank you again. And I know our high school faculty need to be here the earliest tomorrow, so I'm sure they want to head out. So thank you again for staying with us this late, we appreciate it. So now John and I, well, very briefly, tonight is budget adoption night. We've had many, many budget presentations, so tonight we're prepared to just present the overview, so we just need to get it on the screen as we transition here. And so, okay, are we ready? And I just want to remind the community that this is, of course, online, so we can go right into the second slide and just remind everyone that our strategic questions, they guide the process, making sure we're continuing our academic excellence by being fiscally responsible at the same time and encouraging our students and promoting an environment where they think deeply and critically, and they apply problem-solving skills on a daily basis in our classrooms through active participation in their learning as they acquire content knowledge. Our operating standards have been the same this year compared to last, except this year we added some commentary about school safety, continuing the tradition of excellence, being an environment that's safe, supportive, continually improving, innovative, efficient, having a high-quality system of evaluation for our teachers, optimizing our communication with our community, maintaining our class size ratios, having research-based professional learning, maintaining teaming at the middle school, having a wide course offering, particularly at the high school, having an extensive extracurricular program, making sure our students have cross-disciplinary experiences that are reflective of our 21st century society, having district facilities that are clean, safe, well-maintained, making sure our offices function effectively and efficiently. And then obviously, over time, has been a concern in this district in the past, so we continue to keep that as a priority. I just want to remind everyone of our budget process, so we start to the right, where we begin meeting with the administrative team in October, so we take their feedback about their programmatic needs. We do an overview in January for the board based on where we are in terms of the state and where we are in terms of the economy. And then we look at our enrollment, and then we do an initial presentation at the beginning of March. And then after that initial presentation, we do secondary presentations to the Board of Education that go in more detail about each particular programmatic area. And then we take community feedback, and then we present the final budget to you, which is what we're doing tonight for adoption. So just a reminder, we haven't changed our budget-to-budget increase, it's the same as it was when we presented it initially to the board back at the beginning of March, where we're looking at a budget-to-budget increase of about $2.9 million or a 2.5% levy. And then we have gone over historically, and this has not changed, what the percentage increases have been over the past few years in the district. And we also explained how, even though the bond is neutral, it impacts the levy, and John will talk a little bit more about that in the future, which is why we're at 2.5% this year and not under 2%, which is what we've been in previous years. John, would you want to go over just briefly the expenditures?
Sure. I'll go over very quickly, because we have gone over this slide at least twice. So what we have done is that this is, we're putting into 10 large categories, and obviously the two largest ones are the salaries and the employee benefits. And I think throughout the presentations, we talked about why certain numbers are very high, for example, with debt service, and why the number went down, for example, for the buildings and grounds, the whole in there budget. And here are the revenues. And we, the key here is really these numbers, the property taxes, because that's measured against tax cap. And we're definitely coming in under the tax cap. And this is the tax cap calculations. Even though our tax cap is at 5.0, if you look at the bottom line, by the way, this presentation, like Christine said, is online, so you probably cannot read the numbers, but it represents 3.59% increase. We can go up to that for the tax levy, but as you know from the previous number, our increases in the tax levy is 2.13.
So our next slide is on our enrollment projections over the course of the next, through 2023. This is really important when we try to calculate the number of sections we need for kindergarten. And if you look at the next slide, you'll see what our projections are by grade level. Now, this is where we've made a slight adjustment to the budget, and we have, based on the feedback we got from the initial presentation to now, we've added a section at second grade in West Orchard. So we took the contingency position and we placed it there. However, I would just like to note that if we do wind up in a situation where we need to add a position, whether we have an increased enrollment in a particular area that we didn't anticipate, we'll be able to leverage other aspects of the budget in an emergency situation to support additional position. If we go to the next slide, we'll look at the middle school, you'll see we did not make any adjustments there. There was some commentary about concern about the enrollment in seventh grade in Bell, but I would like to remind the board that we have inflated our enrollment in some of our buildings based on anticipated enrollment across the street. So if we do run into a situation where we have a problem, we will have a plan to address it, but I think it's premature to do that at this point, since these numbers have students in them that are projected, but we can't really, basically, it's just a projection. And I do also want to remind everyone, these are all projections, even though they typically tend to be, they tend to be the enrollment, the sections that welcome the students in September, but things could change over the summer. But I do not anticipate changing the second grade in West Orchard, just to be very clear about that. All right, so in terms of the high school sections, again, we haven't made any adjustments to this slide either. And then we haven't made any adjustments to our additions or reductions with the exception of, you know, we placed a teacher back into the rotation in the elementary school, so you'll see there's one less in the reduction area.
So when we first presented, that number was four, now it's three.
So, right, so, and then if you, but these numbers are really, let me just explain how it's written. So we have three reductions in the elementary school based on enrollment because the larger class is moving up to Bell. You'll see we've added teachers at Bell, but primarily in fifth grade at Bell and then in Seven Bridges to support teaming, but then we also had to add a Spanish teacher part-time and a part-time family consumer science teacher to support the fifth grade at Bell, because they're having a bubble of enrollment that we know to be fact based on the kids that we currently have enrolled. And then in Greeley, we're taking our social worker position that's .8, we're making that full-time, we're adding some coaches based on needs, based on enrollment. We are recommending we retain the three security guards we added after Parkland. And then based on our special ed figures for next year, we're able to reduce to teaching assistants.
And then here are the tax analysis, and the bottom line is that these numbers are all estimated. For, so for Newcastle, we're estimating the tax rate increase at 1.92%, and for Mount Pleasant is 5.83. And the difference, the largest discrepancy is basically, is really because of the equalization rates. And we talked about this at the previous presentations. And these are the most recent eight budgets, and there are seven increases, so this is the final number. So what we're talking about doing the last seven increases, doing the last eight budgets, but the budget-to-budget increase are averages 1.42 and the tax levy increase is 1.45. So when you compare to other school districts, I think these numbers are very reasonable.
And then we talk about what happens if the budget isn't approved. And this slide, again, this is all repetitive, but we have an opportunity to put the budget up again exactly as written. We can make some adjustments, or we can go to contingency, or if the budget's not approved after we make adjustments, we can go to contingency. And basically, we would have to reduce 2.0, maybe about 2.3 million from the budget. So if that were to happen, we'd have to look at reducing our expenditures primarily, that would be personnel, and then we'd have to discuss at that time if it makes sense to reallocate some of our fund balance to offset the costs so we didn't have to cut into our programs.
And we went over the notice here, and the numbers have not changed, so this is exactly the same as our last presentation, both pages of notice. So this is actually, sorry, we have a mistake, this is actually 1819 property tax report card, and apologize. And this is the document that we actually need you to, after the budget adoption, also ratify the property tax report card, which is this unit.
So again, this is just a slide summarizing our proposed budget for your consideration tonight. And then we just, in terms of the budget itself, just a reminder that we're aligned to the strategic questions, we meet our operating standards, we're making sure that our students are safe in our district, both physically and emotionally. We're increasing our technologies, we're evolving with the 21st century, we're supporting our problem-based learning initiatives, we're providing additional coaching and security staff within this budget for Greeley, and we're making some adjustments based on enrollment. And of course, it's been important throughout this process that we stay below our tax levy limit. We also have talked about reserving a capital, establishing a capital reserve so we can move, at the end of the year, unexpended funds into this reserve, up to $10 million. So if we run into a situation where we need to make some capital improvements, we have a cushion to be able to pull from in the future. So the board has already approved this to be placed on the ballot, so we'll be talking about this in more detail with our community as we send out our newsletter.
I think, I just want to add two points on this particular recommendation. This doesn't have any impact on the current budget, the future budget, or the tax levy, but I think in the long run, it actually will help the budget in the long run, because if we have needs, capital needs, we do not have to go to, we may not have to go to the topic for additional funding, but we can use this particular reserve fund.
Now, at this point, the budget will be presented for adoption, but of course, if anyone has any commentary that they feel like they want to share with us, they certainly can reach out to us in writing. But also, on the next slide, we have our hearing on May 2nd, and then, of course, our vote is on May 15th. So that's our presentation. So are there any questions? And just for the communities, we've been through the budget process at length already at this point, so I didn't know if there were any final questions, the board... So, you know, I didn't know if there were any final questions the board had, um, that they needed to ask John or I?
Well, I, I just want to, once again, to thank the administration, you know, the faculty for working on this budget, you know, since the summer. And it's a constant process. I think this budget addresses our teaching and learning goals. It's consistent with, with our district mission. I think it's fiscally responsible. We're staying not just within the tax cap, but below the tax cap while accomplishing all of these goals. I am glad that we were able to address the class size issue. Thank you for, thank you for your feedback from the community. We, I, I do believe that that's what we were going to do. And, uh, you know, I, and we've talked about, you know, future, uh, planning and setting the budget and not going all the way out with the maximum just because it creates a lot of things, you know, unnecessary anxiety in the community. And, you know, we, we all know that we watch enrollment and that we will change the numbers later in the year, but I, I just think that presenting it in the way that we have been presenting it through the years is really, um, just difficult for, not, not just for the community, but it's difficult for us. So I know that we'll be, you know, adjusting that going forward.
I just want to add one thing. I'm, I'm just want to echo what Allison was pointing out. And it is really great when we're presenting the budget and meanwhile, we're listening to all the initiatives that are happening at, 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 at all the schools. And really this is what, what we are investing in, really.
Absolutely, absolutely. And it's great to get feedback from the students as well to see how these investments are, are really, are implementing and what impact they're having in, in the classrooms and in students' lives. So, um, you know, once again, thank you for a really excellent budget. Anyone else, anything else to say?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Okay. So first, um, you, you said we're at 2.5% John?
That's the budget to budget.
Right. And I did some, some, some numbers that you sent us. We are not at the top, correct? How far are we away from the top?
We are 5.9.
We are below the median.
Right. So, so.
And then also I just want to point out, another thing is very important is the tax levy. I think you, every, all, all the board members get the report every Friday from New York Association. And if you look at it, I think, um, Warren actually counted, I counted it last Friday. Seventeen school districts that are, have reported already, they went directly to the very top.
They went to the top and we're not there.
The reason is because, because I've talked to some of my colleagues, they, because they don't want to leave any money on the table. That's their reasoning. But we just, that's really just not our philosophy. And, uh, we just think that what is the appropriate amount, that's the amount that we should go to the community and ask for.
Then regarding capital reserve, I just want to mention this Christine, that, um, I know we adopted this already, but with capital reserve, we had discussed that through, with the order committee. And we, uh, discussed that with our, um, accountants and our advisors. And they, they also agree that that would be a good position for the district to take for future. The last thing I, I think this might, I'm going to mind read Jeffrey. You're trying to talk about fund balance. No?
I can't if I want to.
No, 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 no. So I know a couple of weeks ago, we spoke about fund balance and you said you're going to take a look at how much fund balance we're going to use, should we adjust that? Have you made any adjustments to that or not?
Actually, you know, the, one number that has changed is really the state.
I was going to ask you.
I think Vicki and I, that's the number we have been watching. And the interesting thing is that, uh, obviously New York State has adopted, uh, the, the budget and, uh, it was approved, um, by everyone. And so now, now it's the fine, it has finalized. When you look at our, our numbers, our foundation A went up, but our total, uh, number actually went down, I think about $50,000. But at this point, we're not recommending to, to reduce the use. We're still, our, our recommendation is still keeping the same amount.
Okay.
John, can you explain what made it go down?
Well, it, it's because, you know, they look at the numbers all the time and, uh, it's the expense driven As have gone down.
Okay.
And those numbers fluctuate all the time.
Right. So it's nothing in the budget, it's just the numbers?
Yes.
That made it change? Okay.
John, you said that, uh, the debt service, I think you said this, um, that's because of the way we're paying for that, the increase is not really, it's an increase, but that's sort of separate, I guess, to look at it that way. Which means that 2.15 million dollars, this actually means 100% of the increase of the, uh, budget to budget is comes from the salary and employee benefits line. Is that accurate?
Let me get to that slide and you can ask me again. So this is the slide. So what is the question?
Yeah, this is the slide. The two first lines, uh, add up to 2.15 million dollars.
Which, which two numbers?
Salaries and employee benefits.
Okay.
Okay. The line where it says debt service is 808. If you take that out of the 2.988 total on the bottom, you come out to be pretty much 2.1, which is, so 100% of the increase this year, because we have to understand that the debt service is being financed sort of separately, um, is coming from salaries and benefits, right?
I don't look at it that way because, you know, there are other numbers that are driving this number too. For example, the, uh, operations and maintenance number went down.
Right, but there are other numbers that are going up.
Yeah. So, so, you know, it's really not exactly these two, because if you want to pinpoint these two, yes, if they, they add together, it's two million dollars.
2.1.
Okay, 2.1.
Okay. Um, and while I think that this is a good budget, or it's a budget I can support, let's put it that way, um, I, I still fail to understand why it's relevant what the other school districts do. I think as you sort of pointed out at the end, we should just do what's appropriate to us, not try and swap. Okay.
So we're not trying to match up, trying to position ourselves when we come, look at the other school district. I just tell you, the reality is that we prepared this budget, actually pretty much finalized it by January. And, uh, you know, we don't get to see other school districts' numbers until March 15th or so, or, or February, uh, the end of February. So, so, you know, we, we were done. Other than talking to a few colleagues, I know where they are, positioning themselves, we really don't know how everyone is doing. So we were really just doing our own budget because we're really just looking at our own needs versus our own funding sources.
I think you said before, John, we follow our philosophy of how we want to budget and spend.
Do you know, do you know what our budget increase percentage would be x the debt service could be less than 2%, right?
Well, if, if you remove the debt service, our budget to budget increase is 1.6.
Okay. Pass the number.
1.6. But, but there's another piece here is that if you look at the employee benefits, um, it goes up 1.1 million, actually about over five, over half a million was because of the TRS increase.
We still got to pay that, right?
Absolutely. I'm not saying that, but, but, uh, that, that is really out of our control. Just that depending on two things. One is the market performance and the second one is that what is there are expected return rates that they're using at this time because they dropped it and therefore we all had to pay more.
So I, I just want to take a moment. I, just John in his office does a tremendous job preparing for the budget process. I've never been in a district that has, uh, works on it as early as his team starts. So I just, uh, wanted to take a moment to thank John, his leadership throughout this process. So. John's just great.
I, I really want to stress, this is really a team effort. We all participate, everyone, not just the people sitting at the table, but everyone, all the staff and the community member, you know, we listen. I, I know, I know this time, uh, our email addresses and the phone numbers definitely
And I, I want to apologize. So all of the people haven't answered yet. I think I answered 50 emails, but I did go away on vacation and now I'm back. So we do get all your emails and we do try to answer all of them.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Okay. So, um, so we will take the vote later. Christine would like to present, um...
So I just wanted to give an update from our last meeting. So there were a couple of tasks, um, that I said I would complete. So, uh, in terms of safety and security, I just, um, not necessarily for any kind of dialogue or discussion, I just wanted to just share with you where we are. So, um, so I, I, we created the survey and this was sent out on Tuesday to the community. And Rob Greenstein, our town supervisor, has agreed to also send it out to his listserv and will be sure to denote it's only for our, our residents to fill out. So we appreciate their, uh, partnership. Uh, just to collect some, uh, just another data point for our, for your consideration as we figure out how we're going to move forward here. I met with the Greeley faculty and then, um, about what we've talked about collectively with KDNG and then I'll receive feedback from their department heads on, uh, April 23rd after they process collectively what I've shared with them. I have a meeting scheduled with the student government tomorrow to talk about, uh, the KDNG's, uh, project. We have our community forums scheduled for next Wednesday at Greeley. The first is at 10:00 and the second's at 7:00. Um, this was on the survey at the bottom. It was on my email and it's also posted on the website. Uh, we started, uh, I've started some outreach to Greeley alumni and other community partners to talk about as their way that they can help support us, um, if we move forward with any of the projects. Al Terrace has begun the security audits at the other five buildings. Through our Bosse's Coaster, I had a second audit conducted, uh, of Greeley for your consideration. So at this point, I'm suggesting that we, we probably want to, uh, think about meeting, uh, having a special meeting the week of April 23rd, uh, to go over all the information that we collect. So, um, perhaps a special meeting on that Wednesday, the 25th. Maybe we could, I know, uh, Warren may have a conflict, so maybe we have to make it a little later that day where we can just have this be the topic of that meeting. Might make sense for us, uh, to consider. So if, with your, uh, approval, I'll have Lisa start reaching out to you to try to schedule this so we can post it as soon as possible. I'd like to have that meeting, um, date and time set prior to next Wednesday when we start these forums. Is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And that's, uh, my superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. So before the, the comment period, we'll move to committee reports. We have two policies, but before I get to that, are there any reports from any other committees?
No.
No? Okay. So we'll move on to the two, um, policies. Let's see here. So we have policy 5080 and 9065 that we looked at at the last meeting. This would be our second reading, uh, which according to our policy, we would be able to take a vote tonight if everyone is in agreement. So we'll take 5080 first.
No, it's 9065.
Okay. We'll take 9065 first. That would be item 2.1. We changed the language in the bullet, in the bulleted section to make exception for administration of medicine by nurses or other trained and authorized professionals. I believe that was.
That was my concern.
Yes. So thank you for pointing that out. And I believe that was the only change to that one. So I guess we'll just take this one separately and, uh, go ahead and, and vote on it.
I move that we adopt policy 9065.
I'll second, uh, that movement.
Okay. Any further comments on it?
Does the public have any changes?
Well, you know, we have, um, we had our first reading and so the reason, one of the reasons we have two readings at least is to give the community the opportunity to give us comments, you know, after the first reading. So, well, yeah. So, you know, at some point we need, we need to move on, on these things.
Do we receive any community feedback?
No, we haven't. And, um, policies can always be revised. If there's something really significant, we can, I have no problem coming back to the board and saying, let's revise it to include this or to, you know, revise.
After, we had a commentary after we discussed it last time.
Right. So that was the opportunity. So, you know, these are important policies. I, I think we should move on it. And I, I'm saying that I do want to clarify though, that a lot of this is contained in our policies, but this is just laying it out in a clearer way. Okay. So we'll, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor of 9065? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll move on to 2.2, policy 5080. So here we made the changes, the few changes that were noted, uh, regarding more, uh, gender neutral.
Gender, yes.
And all that is in red. So I, I believe that's what, those were the changes there. And adding, um, adding the assistant superintendent for business to, as, um, as a reporter.
I move item 2.2.
Second?
Okay. Any, any further comments on this one?
Nope.
No? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. So that's that. Okay. At this time, um, we would welcome any, any public comments. Anyone from the audience should wish to come up, please, um, state your name and, uh, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name's Michelle DeVivo and I'm just coming up to thank you all. And I'm a West Orchard second grade parent and I wanted on behalf of the parents that are here and the rest of the parents that I know who have emailed and called to thank you for considering the class size. As we know, class size is very important, especially in the elementary grades. And I think it's really important, what you said Vicki, that it's something going forward to continue to think about because it does create unwanted anxiety and concern that if we waited until the summer and decided to add that additional position, will we get the most qualified staff member at that point, knowing ahead of time, being prepared? It's just, it's very nice to know and have that going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
You don't actually have to holler.
My name is Mike Clardy. I came in to like to speak on behalf of my wife and myself, um, with the parents of a first grader at West Orchard School itself. We had concerns and actually the specific reason I'm here is because I saw in the presentation from the website that I was bolded and yelled on. And I'm thinking of something may happen at this meeting in regards to consolidating the 304, so I just wanted to hear what happened. But, um, I, I do want to say, this is the first time I ever been to a school board committee meeting and I've been totally enlightened, um, by what I see from the students, faculty, the administrators itself. It gives me great hope for my son, which is why we came to chat with Mike Clardy in the first place. So I think the consolidation issue, I was irritated about, but hopefully that's off the board now. But I just want to say thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was great.
We have plenty of meetings.
Okay. Anyone else, please feel free to come up. Okay then. All right.
I think we just all have a feeling of thank you so much for hearing us. We feel so grateful and thankful.
Thank you.
It's not, you don't always get heard. You get heard, but not always listened to. And I just, we, it means a lot to us and we are so happy to be here.
Okay. Thank you.
The one thing I forgot to say is that, you know, um, I'm going to see if any parent sent a letter or emailed or they were a senior term on a letter itself. I had the opportunity to meet some of them. There were some great suggestions, ways to look at the budget, to look at the school and that. I suggest expression yourself with, because I was, I was enlightened by, by the letters.
Yes. Agreed. Okay. Thank you very much to the community. Thank you. Okay. All right. So we will... we will move on to the business portion of the meeting. We will not be offended if you don't feel you'll be enlightened any further, but you're welcome to stay or leave as you wish. Oh, thank you. So, let's move on to item, items 3.1 to 3.2. We have a motion to accept the minutes of March 14th and of March 22nd.
I move that we accept the minutes of March 14th and March 22nd to 3.2.
I second.
Any comments?
No.
No? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I recommend 4.1 instructional as modified with tremendous regret and sorrow for the new adventure that two of our colleagues will be embarking on in July.
Did you vote on it?
No, I only voted on Jamie.
It was just...
Yeah, so that's why I...
We just voted on Jamie.
I, I move with regret and sorrow. And heartfelt congratulations, in spite of her sadness.
There's a lot of adjectives happening in this motion.
Well, maybe we'll vote no. Okay. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other comments?
We're going to have the next meeting at the Garden City Hotel.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move item 4.2.
I'll second item 4.2.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a motion on item 5.1 and item 5.2 to approve the CSE summaries reported to the board on, CSE summaries for 2017-18 school year, and CSE summaries for 2018-19 school year, reported to the board on this date.
I move item 5.1 and 5.2.
I second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we have a motion on item 5.3. This is to approve, this is the resolution to adopt the proposed budget and ratify the property tax report card for the 2018-19 school year.
I so moved.
I will, I will second. Any further comments on the budget before we, we adopt it?
We already, we already adopted the, the resolution for the...
Yes, we did that.
We did that.
We did that.
For the proposition.
For the proposition, correct.
Yes, we did that. This is for the budget.
Okay, great.
Okay. Last chance?
No.
Jeffrey?
It's a good budget.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Right, John? Thank you.
So, let's see. Should I take the next three items together? They have to do with voting. We'll do it separately. A motion on item 5.4, this is to approve the agreement with the County of Westchester for the use of the electronic voting machines, including technicians and privacy booths, booths, et cetera.
I move item 5.4. I second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Items 5.5, we have a motion to approve the agreement with Liffy's moving in storage. This is for the delivery and retrieval of the voting machines and privacy booths for the May 15th vote.
I move item 5.5.
I see. Okay, any, any questions? Well, they're not very private, but that's where you go when you vote.
Those little...
The triangles.
Those are little strange.
Those are privacy.
Yes, like those three sections that you can see.
Probably inappropriate.
All in favor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 5.6, we have a motion to approve the use of Phoenix Graphics for printing, binding, and numbering the ballots at the May 15th annual vote.
I move item 5.6 at 50 cents each for a ballot, and I'll keep my comments to myself.
I second.
Allison seconded. Any questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have a motion on item 5.7 to approve the agreement for Health and Welfare Services for four students with the city school district of New Rochelle.
I move item 5.7.
I'll second item 5.7.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we covered 5.8 and 5.9. We have a motion on item 5.10. This is to approve a letter from the board in the school budget newsletter to the community.
I move item 5.10.
I second item 5.10.
Is everyone okay with the message?
Yes.
It's been corrected. There was one mistake. I think it's been corrected. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have a motion on item 5.11 regarding our retainer agreement with, with our attorneys as stated on the agenda.
I move item 5.11.
I second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Facilities, we have a number of change orders from items 6.1 through 6.11. I will take a motion at this time to approve...
We don't have to apply.
To acknowledge, I'm sorry, yeah. It's okay, okay. I know, made a mistake. To acknowledge the change orders as, as reported to the board.
Still don't know that we have to, but I move that we acknowledge them.
So, do we move and, move and second and vote on the acknowledgement? Allison?
I don't know that we have to, but I'm going to have to acknowledge. We'll have to work on this, but for now, I think we do.
Yeah, this is it. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
I acknowledge. I got a quick question. I acknowledge. But I don't mean it's, but my reading of that resolution was that these things would be approved unless there were emergency situations. We've had a board meeting virtually every week for the last two months. Why do these have to be acknowledged as opposed to actually voted? I mean, they're acknowledged because she approved them. I have no, I'm not questioning that.
But our last meeting, our last meeting was the 28th, and, in March, so that was two weeks ago.
So, these all came after the 28th?
Well, there was a one meeting that we had, you know, one, construction meeting that they, they went over that.
Okay.
All right, everyone okay with it? All right. So, financials, we have a motion on item 7.1 to accept the claims auditor report, claim auditors' report from March 2018.
I move item 7.1.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris, as usual. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, notice of future meetings. The next meeting will be, well, the next meeting will...
Be this one.
To be, oh, this one, yes. Regularly scheduled meeting for April 24th. No, yeah, this is not a regularly scheduled, it is a meeting on April 24th at 8:00 a.m. at the Ed Center. This is for the BOSI's budget vote and election.
And then we'll likely have a meeting either that Wednesday, Thursday. We just, Lisa will work on that with you guys offline over the next two days.
Right, so we'll be scheduling another, another board meeting to discuss security later that week. And then following that will be a board meeting on Wednesday, May 2nd, 7:30 p.m. here at the Horace Greeley Academic Commons. This will be the budget hearing, and we'll also hear the library's budget presentation. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
I move that we adjourn the public meeting at 22:05.
I second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.